Okay, we're up and running.
Okay, so we are up and running. We heard from Janet she could hear us, so I think we'll proceed. The meeting is now being recorded. So, welcome. So, just for people in the room tonight, exits are at the back of the room and then there's exits to the building on either end of the hallway. Does anyone have any agenda changes? Hearing none, well.
Russia continues to crack down on dissent at home reportedly detaining around fifteen thousand.
The agenda as is, you might as well mute Sandy while you're at it. You're all being muted, just so you know. So you'll need to unmute if anyone in the public wants to say anything. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Anyone in the room have something not related to the agenda? Anyone online, something not related to the agenda? So, as I said, you have been muted, so if you're trying to say something, you can unmute yourself and turn your video on. Hey, announcements? Does anyone have any announcements? Okay, anything else to add to the staff report?
Actually, the only announcement I would just offer is that we might start noticing that in the school, elementary school parking lots, we're going to see trailers. There's two right over in the central lot. If you look when you're going, they're adding trailer type offices for administrative and other staff. I don't think any school classrooms are moving in there yet, but I know that there is a task force looking at what to do with the enrollment numbers and a short term fix is the addition of these trailers, which you'll start to see. So just FYI, that's what those are.
Yeah, and working with the schools for the remainder of this school year, we said, just go ahead and do it as caused by sort of another implication of COVID and wanting to have spacing. If, as they look into the summer, if it's something more permanent, then we will work with them on a permitting perspective. But we wanted to make sure that we're creating the circumstances where teachers have enough space and that kind of thing for the short term.
I guess during the day for the teachers.
Medium depends on the day.
Two thirds to three quarters full.
If anybody's ever looking for some comic relief, just look for recess and it's an endless source of entertainment.
Do, I guess I have a question related to that. Is there a, something that you think we would need to do for temporary structures? Or is that covered in our, our rules? I know schools are a really different situation than a normal.
I think that's a good question for us to look into. Shelburne is actually in your packet tonight. They're considering some amendments that would make temporary spaces like tents and things more permanently temporarily allowed. It's not something that we have done. We allow for four days at a time for outdoor sales events, but it's something we might want to be looking at for for the future as, as trends lead more towards that kind of thing, so.
Great, well, thanks, Monica. And I guess along those lines, I know UVM had had some big tents up like pretty permanently over the last two years. So, I mean, I don't know that that's occurred here in South Burlington, but.
During the pandemic, we, during the height of it, we essentially said, if you've got a reason to have a tent up, just do it. If it's going to be more permanent, come to us for permitting. But, you know, if you're a restaurant, if you're a school, if you're somebody else who's just trying to make it through, just, just do it. We'll, we'll sort it out afterwards. But we are now starting to get on the backside of that hopefully, and we can start to think about what, what are the lessons learned from it?
Okay, any other announcements? Need staff report items. You had a few great ones in here already. Okay, then, any commissioners' reports from committees?
The airport rezoning task force met last Thursday. And we took a straw poll and the result of the straw poll was there were five people who were no, to deny the zoning request from the airport. There was one person who was, who voted to delay, which would mean after the comprehensive plan, the new comprehensive plan was written. But overwhelmingly, it was, you know, an absolute no vote. And we're having a, I don't know, is it a public hearing? No, it's not really.
It's a public comment session.
Yeah.
So the public will have the opportunity to comment, but it's not officially a public hearing.
Right, so our consultant, Brandy Saxon, is writing a summary of the, of our comments from the meeting and the rationale for the no vote. And it'll go to that comment session on the seventh of April. And then we hope to vote on it after that hearing on the 21st of April. It'll come to the planning commission.
Ted. Well, Paul, has Burlington participated in it? It's their land, right?
Yeah, I don't know. It's our zoning request from Burlington to respond to.
It's impacting their land. You'd think that they had, you know, want to have some kind of.
I think the.
Well, Nick Longo is the.
Right, I was.
Represented from the airport and he's a Burlington employee, so I suppose.
That's gonna be, yeah, is that gonna be here, that public comment?
Yes.
And I think the planning commission will learn a lot from the summary that's being worked on. That will be, it'll provide a lot of explanation and rationale, and it was a very informative process.
Four, four of the members of the task force are from the Chamberlain neighborhood, including Megan Emery and the chair, the co-chairs of the task force are both residents of the Chamberlain neighborhood, the airport part of the Chamberlain neighborhood, actually, so. It's a good group. And they certainly don't want the airport expanded any further into their neighborhood.
Great, thanks, Tom. Just if I could jump, just jump in a couple of clarifying things. I think it was said, but Burlington is participating as the property owner, as the airport. So Nick Longo and Larry Lackey, they've, they made the initial presentation and have provided some follow-up documents, and that's been Burlington's role in this particular process. If anyone is interested in the drafts, that the, the task force received three draft recommendations for the March 3rd meeting, and that's also, you can find that through Laserfish and through the planning commission, then linked to the airport task force website. There's a document that has in that, in the packet, it has all three, the deny, we called it a defer option or a yes option. So what Brandy is doing mostly this week is incorporating some additional comments from the task force from last Thursday into the deny option, and that's what will be going to public hearing. So if anyone is curious about the.
Public comment.
Sorry, public comment session. If anyone is interested in the draft as it was previously written, that is now being edited. It is in that packet, the airport rezoning task force packet for March 3rd. I'm hoping to, this, this will be, the public comment session will be advertised in the other paper for the issue coming out next week, which will be about a week before the session. That's the closest we could do it, just with the timing of the meetings. And the updated draft will be available to the public for that session.
I think. So the audience members should, hey, Tom. Okay, either take your talking in the hallway. Okay, well, it, it, I think it is, so you're welcome to talk in the hallway. Yeah, very good. So, can we open the public hearing? Was it warranted for seven or?
Yep, you're, you're good to, good to go.
Very good, so we can move into the public hearing on the draft amendments to land development regulations. We have kind of LDR dash 22 dash one through four on our docket for tonight. There is the red line diversion in the packet as well as the report describing the changes.
So you received three comments by email. One was in your packet and two, I believe, were sent directly to you from folks. We got one more this afternoon from the chair of the committee on common areas for dogs. So here you go. I emailed it to you also, but knowing that you probably didn't see it, look at your email in the last half hour. I just printed it about for you.
And just to be clear, is this, this committee is one of our standing committees for the city, just?
I think we've acknowledged that they've been presented, so I don't, you're welcome to summarize if you like, but it's for the commission. So we have posted the other ones to our website and we'll make sure this one gets added to it.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Betty Basilia, the chair of the committee. Okay, um, do we need to actually move to open the hearing? Did we?
Probably good thing to, yeah, it's probably good to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, we have a second on opening the public hearing, Duncan. Okay, on favor of opening the public hearing, I?
I.
That was unanimous, so we can move into the public hearing portion. Is there anything staff wanted to let us know about before we take public comment?
I think it's in the packet. We did, the legal review has been completed. There were a few little edits from there and a couple of little technical things that we identified. The one that maybe is the most significant is the, one of the site amenities that you authorized or proposed to authorize is to allow balconies and porches. And it, in the prior draft, said that if not every unit has a balcony or porch, that it can only count for half. Based on some feedback that we got internally from staff, they felt that it might be better to just say it cannot count for more than half, period. Because if you only had balconies, then there would be no place for a barbecue or a, something like that, that's a little bit of a gathering space for folks. That's one thing that's in there, that's sort of tips slightly towards policy, so we wanted to flag it. You're welcome to accept it or reject that. Other than that, I think they were mostly just little clarifications.
Yeah, there were a few places where the, the phrase site amenity was used when civic space should have been and vice versa, but that is all corrected in this packet.
Sorry, can you clarify the, the rationale for that, though? Because it's not absolutely in all cases that all, you know, if the balconies are small enough, then there would still be excess space for a common area. So is there a certain circumstance in which it would be, mathematically, there are going to be cases where they could go 100% balcony and still have required footage remaining for common area.
Yes, and also in this, it, in the draft that is in front of you tonight, it would say that anytime that you use balconies, it can never count for more than half of your total requirement. And that's the same thing that you've done with boardwalks over wetlands and things like that. If you choose, you don't have to accept that. You could say that if every, what, what was, what you warned for public hearing was that if every single unit has a balcony, that that can suffice as the, as the total site amenity. But if, if less than everyone did, it could only count for half. That's what you'd warned, so. Up to you. That was just some feedback that we got internally from our development review staff.
Yeah, I thought the, that the 50% was a compromise where some commissioners said balconies don't count or shouldn't count, and we arrived at a compromise saying, okay, 50%.
Yeah, I actually think so. That's what I remembered for myself, but I might have misinterpreted the conversation. So we might have written down something, even though I think I was thinking along the same lines you were. I don't know how other people feel, but does that seem reasonable? Monica, I know it was one of the ideas that you had brought forward, you know, the idea that there'd be additional open space on the property also.
Yes, I mean, yes, as this, as a starting point in regard to this setup, yes, I guess that makes sense.
I just wanted to point out that there is a minimum size included in the balcony. It has to be six by eight as, as a minimum. So you're starting with a 48 square foot balcony, and if you have a 20 unit or more building, the requirement is 60 feet. So there's only 12 feet left that if you're adding it all up, it doesn't create a meaningful gathering space elsewhere. And Paul just put, put it up on the screen. So that's what we were trying to balance is having a meaningful gathering space, but also having a reasonable size for private space and not have developers putting on a, you know, three foot by four foot balcony that's just attached to the sliding door.
I guess it might bring up questions about things like inclusionary zoning, yeah, like distribution of where, who would get a balcony. So, but anyway, maybe that's a different topic for a different time, because it's not, we're not discussing the conversation of requiring outdoor space for everyone. This is a different topic, so I'll reserve that comment for when we do get there, because I would expect in this case that the affordable units won't probably have a balcony with these regulations. And I don't know where the equity is in that, but we can bring that up at a different time, because that doesn't fit with this PUD. So I'm cool with it.
Right, well, the, the applicant has the responsibility that affordable units are substantially the same as the market rate ones, and determination of that is through the DRB process. And there's multiple ways in which that could be achieved, and so we've encouraged to not try to regulate that to the nth degree and let that standard, let the applicant justify why something makes sense or doesn't make sense.
That will be interesting to watch and keep an eye on. I'm curious to see how that goes.
Okay, I mean, they, they've been stalwarts to it, so.
Yeah, thank you. So before we move into public comment, did anyone else have any kind of questions or comments or clarifying items? Anything else from staff? Okay, um, is there any public comment on the proposed LDR changes? Tom, do you want to comment? This is Tom Bailey in the room.
Tom, can you hear? I think it's on.
Oh, it's on, yes, we can hear you.
So, um, I'll summarize quickly. There's obviously a lot of detail. When you attempt to do something that, again, overlays over existing existing zoning districts, when there's already a traffic overlay district in the same area, it's complicated. I like the idea of the context as a, as a concept. I I think, you know, when somebody's doing development, it should always be technically within a context. And I've certainly, well, I, I've seen it drafted that way before. What appears to be lacking here is a understanding of what is really, how much this is really gonna, you don't, I, what the outcome is going to be. Ideally, you would be incentivizing housing as well as perhaps other kinds of development in these areas, in these districts. And, you know, that's, that would be a goal. We all know that when you're dealing with infill, which these districts primarily are, you cannot achieve the same economies of scale that you can in other places. If you read a case for housing that we put out, that was a lot of what was in there. Size matters. And when you have infill, it, you don't have the same kind of size. So that's one, one issue. So I think context is a good idea, but you need to consider what the cost of a context report is going to be on top of all the other expenses of trying to put together housing in a reasonable way, in an affordable way in the areas that you're talking about, or really any kind of development, so it doesn't become undoable. It would certainly be a shame to draft these regulations and then have them result in nothing. So therefore, I would recommend doing a technical review from outside of house, outside of the, of the planning and zoning context, who've done most of the drafting for you. And that would be a reality check for them as well as informative for you all. We obviously, I obviously recommended the same thing with the amendments that were just adopted. But here, I think it's even more critical, because there is real resistance to doing the kind of land development that was on the table in the last batch that are really, I think there's, don't seem to be any real dispute that people really want housing in the areas that you're talking about and infill housing. So you really need to know how this is going to work. And I know it takes time and I know it, but the, but the goal will be to do it right and look outside and find somebody that can do a technical review, a look at this and see how this is actually going to work for people that are trying to build or trying to do things. Particularly now when you have a million dollars of potential, potential affordable housing money on the table and you don't want your own regulations to be swat, using that money in inefficient ways. So time to stop, maybe do a technical review at this point and see how much it really costs to do this. If you're going to use these regs, I suspect it would inform how you go about this going forward. I like the idea of the context and some of the other details that are in here, but they, you know, they, each of them can add an expense potentially that makes it hard and it takes time and it's just one more step. And permitting is bad enough, so. That's all.
Thanks, Tom.
Since you've raised the issue, can you give some specifics? I mean, it's easier to sort of throw a red herring.
That's why you're here. I'm not trying to be snide.
No, you're raising the issue, though, so you must have a, a specific.
I don't have a lot where I've seen how a developer could do this. I try to reach out to developers to get answers. They're in business. I'm retired. It costs money for them to spend time with me doing the kinds of reading the regulations and going through it that actually should be done as part of your process. And, you know, I wish it were otherwise. I'm, I've obviously spent some time on this already, but you know, if I find somebody as I have in the past, who, who will sit down and say, here are some problems. You know, it, it may be my, somebody that I've talked to is a developer, but it's not your client. It's not your person. So I don't think it's going to have as much credibility with you guys anyway, frankly.
In your profession.
I don't have any credibility, but.
In your professional opinion.
I don't have.
Before us, and you're raising this issue.
Yeah.
And you must have something in this that piqued your interest, other than some nebulous, well, let's, let's.
I didn't think I was being nebulous.
Thank you.
I thought I was, I thought.
Give me specifics.
Well, look at the requirements that are in developing a context report, which is basically what's, what you're looking for. So that's one more layer on top of all the other requirements that, that you're trying to do. And if you actually got some, some advice from somebody else who you trusted, not me, I'm not a developer.
I trust you.
Oh, come on. Anyway, um. We, we should discuss that at some future time.
Okay. So I think we should maybe.
Yeah, so I don't mean to be, I, I, to make a joke out of this.
No.
No, it's just that, you know, I mean, you have to have your own expert, your own expert, somebody that you can rely on. And when I try to find out answers to stuff, I mean, there's some small areas that I know something about and then others where I just have to educate myself from people that know. And, I mean, obviously, there's certain expertise that each of you brings to this process, life experience and otherwise, just like your staff has experience that they bring to the process, but they don't have everything in-house.
Okay, so.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Tom. Those.
Yes, it does.
Does anyone online have any comments to provide? Did we hear anything in the chat?
Not yet.
Okay, Mike, you want to go ahead? We have someone in the audience, Mike Semino.
And apologies to folks at home that you can't see the speakers. My tech ability to switch cameras is clearly not quite there yet, so. Take our word for it that Mike Semino is now the speaker.
He can come up on the stage.
The mask is okay, I assume. So I'm looking at a draft of a letter that I think you might have received earlier today. So I don't know how interactive you want to get with this, but I kind of presented some of my concerns in the form of questions, inviting you to give some thought to a few things that were on my mind. One had to do with the fact that at this point in time, we're not addressing consideration of increased densities as a means to an end to help address some of our housing challenges. And my concern is that if you go out and approve the new PUDs based on the present status quo zoning in these environments, that if you decide that you are going to then consider increasing densities in some areas, how will those increased densities impact the PUDs that you have permitted? Will the metrics that you've associated with those PUDs still continue to serve you well, even if those densities are increased? Or will you find yourself maybe confronting some challenges that, you know, maybe you'd say, well, maybe we should have thought about dealing with the density issues before we decided to move forward with the PUDs? So, I, I mean, I don't have, you know, specific, you know, projects or, you know, academic studies or anything around that, but it just seems that there's a logic to not wanting to go through and approve some things and then go out, change densities. And that is a topic of conversation. I think it's something that you're going to be going to. So what comes first? The, the PUDs or addressing your inherent zoning and densities in some of these areas? On a tangent to that, and I would point towards the Spear Meadows project, which languished in the permit process for 10, 12, maybe 15 years, and is there finally moving dirt around there? But one of the frustrations that were expressed by a Butters who opposed that development was, hey, this is an R4, and now all of a sudden, you're coming here and you're telling us that they can double the density here with TDRs. So that concern basically kind of says. have your zoning nomenclature actually reflect what the density is that may be permissible in the zones where it is? So that if somebody wants to move into a neighborhood or look for an excuse to oppose a development, that the ambiguity of your zoning nomenclature is not going to be something that they can hang their hat on. So I think that one's a pretty straightforward kind of a thing. I know that you may be increasing, uh, density, based on either IZ units or the TDRs, and you'd have to kind of figure out how to massage that into the equation. But if somewhere in black and white there's language that says, hey, there's a maximum density in this zone, that's not gonna be exceeded, and this is what it is. So just introducing that, that thinking for you to, uh, give consideration to. Tom, uh, spent a little bit of time, uh, expressing concerns about the context analysis, and I did in my own, uh, letter to you earlier. I went through that and I, I started feeling like I did when I was college and I, in college, and I was being given an assignment that was more complicated and tedious than I wanted to spend my time doing. And I was reading through all of the stuff that you want a developer to address and shed light on. The vast majority of that knowledge, which is already pre-existent out there and is known, but to ask somebody to go out and to author a report that will obviously take considerable time, that will cost considerable money, that will work in the wrong direction when we're trying to find ways of, uh, making housing more affordable and to incentivize more housing. And regardless of how great a job you do on that context report, it's not gonna preclude people from stepping up and starting to argue with you about it. So, I mean, what are you trying to achieve? And I'm sure there's a good intention. With, uh, you know, let's just make sure that we don't try to shove something in here that obviously is out of place. But how, how often has that happened historically in this community? I know we got different kinds of things that are going out here, but can you provide examples of things that were so out of context that you look and you say, how could they ever have thought about doing it? That doesn't make any sense to me. So this is a, this is a, uh, an unnecessary expense, but I don't think that you are giving up, receiving any of the information that you have not historically received when other applications have been submitted. So that's my thinking about that. Technical.
Mike, I'm sorry, I'd like to understand what you're saying, because it sounded to me like you just said we're, we're asking the same amount that we have before. Well, I, I like, I'd like to understand your comment a little bit more, cuz I.
Okay. Well, uh, in, in the course of a developer submitting an application and going through the various parts of an application process, uh, applications are looked at through a lot of different lenses. And, uh, I mean, I think, uh, you know, I, I mean fundamentally, uh, you know, there's an eye test that you can, uh, you know, that everybody can look through about whether or not something is, uh, overdone, or whether it's gonna fit in, uh, with what it is that you're doing. Uh, a lot of the information, the just inherent knowledge of, wha- what is context? I mean, I, I think that that's kind of like, uh, I mean, you're, you're trying to, uh, quantify something that a part of it is subjective in nature too. So you're going out and there are, th- there's really a significant number of, you know, uh, address this or address that, answer this question, answer that question. It, it's really significant. I mean, the amount of time that somebody will have to invest to satisfy what you're asking them to do here, and that translates to money. The, you're probably talking about ten grand.
So I just wanted to, um, so one of the things you said earlier was about, um, neighbors being concerned or complaining and holding a process. And this context analysis is one of the ways of actually supporting the project. Because it talks about the planned character of the area and the comprehensive plan. It's not saying that, um, a new thing needs to match what's next door. It's, it's really talking about how, um, or part of it is talking about how the planned project fits in with the vision and the goals and the future. And kind of supports a project that adheres to that and might look different than what's next door. So I.
The logic that is the foundation, uh, of, of, of what this context analysis is based on. I mean, that is, it's easy to understand. So I'm not, I'm not arguing with that. If you could wave a magic wand, uh, and, and have something like this generated in a meeting or two, uh, coming in, uh, to the city, it would be one thing. But there's, there's a tremendous amount of effort. Another way that you might be able to make it a lot less expensive is if it were a check the box exercise. And, uh, in, in, rather than compelling the applicant to go out and, you know, you know, have this narrative generated from a third-party vendor, maybe you could attempt to objectify the items and the metrics and the criteria that you are desirous of from the applicant, and it might really expedite, you know, so that, okay, these things are right, that you put them in the computer program, uh, as well, so that you can, uh, develop data over a period of time uh, about some of these applications and, you know, some commonalities and some other things that, you know, step outside, uh, of the bounds of these things. So, uh, I'm just saying, I, I understand the, uh, the logic of this, and I, I know the motive, uh, you know, will be to, you know, demonstrate that, uh, the, the city is, uh, thinking of the concerns that neighbors are gonna have and that it, it's possibly a placation as well. But it's still not going to stop somebody. It's not like your form-based code where if you check the box, you're, you've got an entitlement. This contact study doesn't provide you with an entitlement, as far as I, I'm understood. It's a subjective kind of a document. It's like, you know, doing a, an essay test. And your teacher can, can grade it, uh, subjectively as well.
Well, that.
So those are my thoughts. I didn't, I don't.
Very much.
I don't, you know, uh, and, uh, I guess, any other thoughts or questions for me?
No, I think that was a good explanation of your comments.
Just one quick note.
Thank you.
To, to sort of, uh, that, that relates to that, that might try not to word, use the word context, but I'm gonna have to give some context to the conversation is the general PUD, unlike the other ones, is never required. So what an applicant is getting is broad flexibility from the D, uh, via the DRB to modify city standards. And so, you know, you talked about, you know, what, what is expected in return? The other PUD types say you have to design it exactly like this. This one is pretty broad authority for the DRB to waive a lot of things, setbacks, heights, lot sizes. And so the context report becomes sort of the foundation to a certain extent of what should the board be thinking about when they waive setbacks, waive lot size, and what's around it? And I think that the key is this PUD is never required. So somebody could choose to just build as a site plan.
Or subdivision.
And then they can follow the more strict, um, direct rules of it. So, I value the input. I'm not making any judgment as to whether you should or shouldn't make any changes, but I think it was important to give a little bit of context as to why that exists in, for this one.
Okay, any other public comment, um, anyone online? And, um, just so you know, we did mute you, so if you're trying to speak up, you'll have to unmute yourself. Monica, did you have a, a question?
Well, just, I've read and I've heard some good things, and I do wanna talk about them. So we'll be doing that.
We will. I just wanna make sure we have all the input.
Forget.
Yeah.
I wrote down here.
So I think our goal is to make sure we've received all our public comment as part of the hearing, and then we can kind of close that public comment period and have a kind of a discussion amongst ourselves about what we wanna do. Anything else from the public? Okay, um.
I would like to say that I noticed something really for the first time, that we've had, uh, some constructive input, but we've also had some, which is rare, a very positive in, input from the public saying we've done a great job with this general PUD. And that's quite unusual, and I think we should take note of it. Because it doesn't happen often. We should be quite happy about that.
Yes, I am quite happy, um, with the comments we've received. Okay, well, I'm not hearing any other public comments, so I think, do we need to make a motion to close the public comment period? Somebody wanna make a motion? Okay, do we have a second for closing the public comment? And Ted seconded, okay, on favor of closing the public comment. Hi. Okay, that was all hands unanimous. Thank you for coming as well, and everyone online, and the, and the written comments, and like Michael said, they were quite constructive and hopeful.
All, all of them, they were of a different tenor than we usually get.
Very good. Well, any, any comments or questions or discussion up here?
Yeah, I, I think we might have said to, to Tom and, and Mike that the con, the context analysis is required, because this is, and, and I think Paul touched on it, because the, the general PUD is not like the others. And particularly where there's infill, small, small parcels, the, the impact on the surroundings can be quite significant, and that is why it's in here.
Yeah.
Monica? So, a couple things, um, and particularly of the two, I was very appreciative of all the written comments. What these two people's comments said to me was, uh, it furthers my hope that we do set up a subcommittee to continue to watch very carefully the impact of these regulations and see where there are things that need to be adjusted. You know, are we paying attention to what's happening in DRB meetings, all of this, so we can go along the way? Example, you know, is a technical review needed? I, I mean, if, if it's deemed that it should be, to me, that would seem it could be happening on a parallel path at least. But it seems like, uh, uh, we should all be doing our own technical review of everything we've been doing to make sure, that was a lot of work that we did, and we can't just let it sit there. We need to continue to evolve it. So I hope that we do form whatever, whether it's a subcommittee or whatever, however we do it. In terms of, um, Mike's second comment, I am always all for anything we can do to streamline for people, lower hurdles, where, you know, if they're with, within this development context, and the context analysis, if there is anything, I mean, I love check the boxes, right? I mean, if there's anything we could find that can at least, you know, is part of it something that can be a checkbox, even in a generic PUD, like it, pointing to, um, specific parts in here, hazards and level ones, I mean, there may be some things that we can streamline somewhat, and that would add clarity for the community as well, when they see anything. So, um, I liked the idea, and anywhere we can add a checkbox rather than an open essay, I think is helpful to everyone, both the developer, but also the community as they absorb. So just two cents there. And I'm always in favor of, yes, making it very clear to people what, um, the allowable is within an area so that there aren't surprises, uh, cuz it is, yeah, but I think we're getting there with our PUDs.
Duncan, did you?
Yeah, I, I was gonna comment on what Monica just said, but with Mike's comment about that. Is that not something that we already do? And I, I thought we were.
What's the?
I'm sorry, the, the minute, the maximum density that can happen somewhere. I mean, isn't that?
So I think we have made a step forward with the last round of amendments, where previously you could, in certain districts, the R2 residential two district sort of became a residential four district whenever there was a PUD, just sort of automatically, and that was a little confusing to folks. I would say we still have some of it in that, you know, let's say you've got the R12 district or whatever. You have an inclusionary requirement and a ability to get bonus homes if you meet affordability standards, so you can be more than 12 units an acre through affordability. So if somebody was saying, oh, it means that it's maximum of 12, it could in fact be more than that, because you get affordable bonuses. The, the approach that some communities have taken, like Burlington, is to rather than put a number on it, they put a qualifier on it. So they call it the high-density district, or the medium-density district, or the lower-density, and I know that that is a subjective term. But the challenge with putting a number is that if next month you say, well, what if we incentivize, um, net zero homes and you make it so that they can do more, then you have to change the district again. And that, you know, might be also confusing to people to think that, oh, well, so I guess my district is just getting more and more and more. So I guess that, that's a discussion for you all to have, you know, how, how do you balance?
And it's a discussion, you know, I know it's a topic that Monica's brought up in the past, like how to make a number really reflective of what can happen there, and.
I completely get Mike's point there. I mean, that, that can be frustrating for somebody when they're looking out their window going, okay, how many houses are gonna go over there? And somebody's like, oh, it could be four, it could be six, it could be eight. I mean, not that any number's wrong, but just trying to give some clarity to the public on that.
Wouldn't it make sense to have a map that, um, could be provided of the max max, you know, there's taking the maximum potential, and make it very clear, potential, that this is, you know, what's South Burlington, this area, the max potential, not necessarily meaning that that's what it's gonna be. But then people know what the worst-case scenario is, along with what you both are saying.
I mean, our calculator that we were able to use during this process did that. You know, but that's something that we studied and had meetings and talked about, and, but there are, I mean, that was such a valuable tool that it seems, I don't, it seems like a, well, I don't know, I just, it would be wonderful to hold on to that tool and, uh, make it available to the public or so, something, uh, cuz that, that can get there. You know, you can look at, well, what is my maximum opportunity here? And you're looking at all of your hazards and your level ones, and you're gonna only want to do your smallest possible, you know, or the, you know, the, the most number of units per, per, um, dwell, uh, building, uh, et cetera, to, to, to see, okay, what's the, what's the worst case, or what's the worst case? You know, what's the biggest? Some people might not say that's the worst case. That we do have it in that wonderful calculator. The question is, what do we, what do we do with it? So I don't know that the answer is right here, but the good news is that was a lot of work to make that thing, and it basically works. So let's.
It seems like something that we're probably not gonna solve tonight, but maybe in our next many months of work, as we're talking about TDRs and underlying zoning, and maybe thinking about some changes, maybe we can make, like, think about what we call things too. Paul, did you?
Yeah, well, um, there's more to the equation than just us, though, because everything we do then gets interpreted by the DRB, uh, before it's implemented. So we're not, we're not, what we write, what we say is not the only game in town. It's the way, I know another whole body of people, uh, interpret what we've said, you know, so it's not, we've done our work. I mean, there's, you know, what can we do? I suppose we could meet with the DRB. I, I've been curious to to get a kind of feedback from the DRB about, you know, what they think about what we've done. That would be an interesting. That would be an interesting thing for me to, to hear. And then I also wanted to say completely on a different subject is we had one letter, I thought, that was just excellent as a summary of what we're trying to do. And that was from Janet, is her name? I mean, that was just, you know, we could publish, we could publish that and say, this is what we've been trying to do, you know, it was really good.
Yeah. It was just really great feedback. You know, we had another letter also that kind of pointed out some really great points. And I know, Michael, you would acknowledge that too. It's, it was really helpful. And I think, you know, if we do choose to move this forward, having kind of feedback like that is really helps me be able to support what we're putting forward to council to not only just kind of our vote and comments, but to be able to say we got these public comments too.
I actually did also just remembering that.
Sorry, Michael. Michael had his hand up.
Finish.
Well, we just didn't, because this one came in, so the dog, dog space, common areas for dogs. I mean, we know that that's going to be, that is going to be an issue. And we, you know, talk about quality of life around everything we're doing. And dog parks are loud and people are sometimes great about picking up and sometimes not. And so just something to keep in mind as we are looking, particularly in the transit overlay district and where a lot of this general, general PUD may be going. Is that something that we, in the same way we asked, I believe we were, I'm losing track now, if it was a wish list or did we decide we were going to ask the parks, park and rec to look at where open space may be, but include within that this common area for dogs.
Michael?
Well, just to continue on that, I'm wondering whether these three points aren't better handled as part of the ordinance relating to dogs and other pits in our public spaces, rather than trying to squeeze them into a PUD. Something that maybe we should think about. And then I had a, I had a comment on something that I guess Tom Bailey said about a technical review. It, it got the hairs of my neck up. You know, we have a professional staff here, very professional. And I think the essence of what Tom Bailey is saying, let's get rid of them and subcontract this work to somebody else. I mean, I found it a bit. Well, if I worked for the city, I would find it a little offensive. Because we're guided by professionals here and we do our due diligence. So I think it's a bad idea.
Well, we don't need to follow up on all of the comments, so.
But I'd like to agree with what Michael had to say. Yeah, I agree with what Michael had to say in that it felt an insult. And I just very much appreciate everything that staff does do. So I thank you, Michael, for saying that.
Yeah, I agree. We also, in addition to our planning staff, we've also received the legal review as well. And we've had comments from the DRB that having like clear guidance on how they can evaluate things is really important to them. And I feel like this context analysis kind of gets towards that, giving them a framework, so. Any other comments or questions? I mean, we could move on to the, the kind of vote piece of this, if I can find my.
I'm ready to make that motion.
Lost agenda here. Okay, so I think, I think we need to have like the official language, which we do have in our packet.
I see it here, yeah.
Michael corners the market on all of the.
Okay, well, he didn't read it yet.
Come on, man. I know you want to do.
Somebody can steal the motion.
Make me an offer.
Monica, you, do you really want to do it?
I want Ted to do it. I don't care who does it. Go for it, Michael.
Okay, Michael.
I'm just trying to.
I move to approve the draft amendments to the land development regulations, numbers LDR 22-01, 22-02, 22-03, and 22-04. With recommended legal and technical changes provided in tonight's packet. And submit the amendments and planning commission report to the city council.
I'll second that.
Monica, okay, any additional discussion?
Only that if there is any afterthought about potentially, you know, box checking anywhere we can in that process. If there is a way, if there are any ideas within that along the way, it doesn't necessarily need to be a change to the LDRs, there might just be something in the process that could be added that I think would be helpful. Let us know, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
So no change now. Anything else? Okay, favor? Hi. That was unanimous. Very good.
Just to Monica's point, I wanted to wait until after the vote. But one of the things that we had talked with you very briefly about it with the last round of amendments is in the background, with your permission, we'd like to look for opportunities to streamline things. It was a lot that was passed in the last round. We will probably put it as a specific work plan thing over the next year. But in the background, I've asked Kelsey, who's got a really good eye for this stuff, to see, is there somewhere where we're being redundant? Where we're asking something that is not really useful to the DRB, that kind of thing. I am seeing a lot of head nodding that that's acceptable from your end. So, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
And actually, the only other thing I wanted to say, very close to what Paul was saying, is that there are a few things that are required in the context analysis that are required in other parts of an application, either for subdivision or site plan or in a, the general sort of PUD application. Things like the location of hazards, stuff like that, that will be required elsewhere. So I just didn't. It may look like there's a lot of requirements when you look at this section, but some of that's already being produced for other parts of an application. So just, just in response to the comment about you're, you're making people do this whole report out of, out of thin air is not, not entirely accurate. It is for a few of the, a few of the elements for sure, but not for all of them.
Great. So I think we can move on to the next item, which is actually our work plan. It's a good segue. I really like the table, the summary table.
Thank you.
Job.
So it's on page 34 of 63 in the packet, if anyone's looking.
So page 34.
Yep.
And 35. It was so exciting to see some items complete as well. Any, any commissioner comments? I mean, I think that the, a big thing is just an update for us, you know, we had asked to keep informed. Duncan?
I did have one question. The update to the citywide official map, I noticed in there, it says includes review of east-west roads. Is that meaning to be done? I know that we had, not, not that I agree with it, but we had moved that down, the work plan. Is that mean that it's going to be done?
I think we agreed to not put the grant monies toward it, but I didn't think we moved it down in terms of priority of our work. Remember?
That, that wasn't my understanding, maybe I'm wrong.
I can't remember off the top of my head exactly how that had gone.
What was Duncan's question? Sorry, I didn't.
My question was on the, the citywide update, citywide official map. The bottom says includes review of east-west roads. And I know that we had moved that down in terms of funding. And my thought was also that we had moved it down in terms of priority and sort of, in my opinion, kicked it down the road. Sorry for the pun.
Jessica, if I might, the description section on, in this document, I edited a little bit for clarity, but most of, most of it is from the original document from October or so of this year, October, November of this year, of last year of 2021. And that discussion of east-west roads occurred after that. I just didn't want to go through and start editing the work plan to eliminate things. That would, that'll be something that's reflected if, when the work plan is updated for next fiscal year. But I didn't want to start going and cutting things and changing the priorities of the approved, the way that the work plan was approved by the planning commission before that discussion on east-west roads occurred. Does that help at all or am I making it muddier?
Yeah, yeah, it took a.
I guess I'm still.
From that meeting, that was the language from our 11:30 meeting. So it was just kind of part of that bigger description in there. I don't know, I don't have any notes, at least on my thing that we had deleted that piece.
Well, I sort of understood as well that we were going to discuss it at some point. And I'm not quite sure where in this, I mean, it's not in here, but the question is, you know, when?
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm going.
So the objective, and remember, this is, this is a work plan. It doesn't mean that you necessarily hit every item that you strive to do, because, you know, the world's messy. But the objective was to complete the items in here for the. I thought that there was another column, Kelsey, that maybe we omitted in this one about what the commission's objective in this fiscal year is. Am I, am I wrong on that? That some of them, it wasn't finish the project, it was identify the funding to do it.
There was in the original document, there is not in this document for streamlining purposes.
Maybe that's something for us to talk about bringing back, because I think it gets a little bit. So for example, 2024 comprehensive plan, updated 2024 comprehensive plan is required by law. That was not expected to be finished in this fiscal year. I think maybe us bringing back what's the objective during the specific work plan period would be maybe helpful for folks.
Okay.
Just so, like the east-west road thing, I don't remember what we said was our objective this year. Was it to finish the project or or initiate a discussion? I think that maybe.
Yeah, this is a good point, Duncan. I think this is, so it says the fiscal year 2022 commissionerial action for that item says determine scope of update project and timeline for completion. So it wasn't indicating that we would finish all those things. It was just kind of to make a plan, so. Like you, exactly what you said, Ted, to make a plan, to do it. Anything else?
I have, Monica, something. Relating to the subcommittee comment I just made before, whether it's a subcommittee or not, I I feel that there are still outstanding things from interim zoning that we haven't definitively made decisions on or haven't done that we said we were going to do or either ask the city council to give us direction if they want to, I mean, or do we just wait until they do? But my point is, it doesn't feel right to not at least have some kind of IZ. You know, do I, am I not seeing it?
I think it's the last one, it's on the next page.
It's the very last item. And this, for clarity, it's not actually in priority order. I tried to order it with, as in the original work plan, sort of size of project. So we had some sense of this is a very big project, this is kind of a small project, and it's in the kind of et cetera section.
Okay, but another one, though, so thank you, sorry, yes. But I'm thinking also, you know, there were things that came up as fallout that there seemed to be a number of city councillors, you know, saying, yeah, gee, they should take a look at that.
They didn't task us.
I know that. No, I get that they didn't task us, but I'm just worried that if we wait too long, we're going to start to, it's going to become fuzzy. So it would be great if they're going to task us to look at something. It would be great if we put that on their radar or just to give it some, to figure out where that's going to fall in. And then another example is, and I may have missed this. Aren't we going to be discussing an infill PUD? Because I, the general PUD kind of came in as a like, okay, this we have to do, but.
Our recommendation was that the general PUD becomes the last PUD, rather than creating an infill and a campus and an agricultural and a business one, that the general PUD builds off the infill as its source and becomes the final one, so that you can, that was our recommendation.
But aren't we also, I mean, we did. Because we were talking about infill in one area, but then there's also the infill on the small parcels.
Right, but that may not be a PUD. I guess that's what I'm getting, you absolutely have the, the subject of infill in pre-existing neighborhoods. But that may not be a PUD type. That's a subject area of what do you want to see? The orchards neighborhood, the east woods neighborhood, the Chamberlain neighborhood, how do you want to see it evolve?
Or other, I mean, like we discussed before, should our one even exist? And we also, okay, we're not going to talk about that right now. But it isn't, isn't that, I mean, that is on our radar to have the discussion though, right? Even if it's not a PUD, the whole, I don't know what to call it. Because infill seems to already be filling another box, but it's, and it's not just the the R4 neighborhoods, if I say it that way. It's just that, you know, we talked about getting to that, and we know it's going to be a difficult conversation. It's going to be right in communities' backyards, but.
Right, so I think our recommendation would be your, it's middle of March now, in about a month, you're going to be developing the next version of this work plan for next year, which will start in about three months. So I would recommend that subjects like that become candidate projects for the priority. Because next year is coming very fast.
Okay. I just.
Right, right. And this list will get you at least till July.
Michael?
Yeah, I, I know we, before we got on to this general PUD and we were getting to the end of the last amendments, we did say, let's do the infill next. But subsequent to that, we agreed with Paul and Kelsey that we don't have to do a separate PUD for info, because we can cover it with this general PUD. And that therefore we basically discarded that idea of a separate info. That's my, my strong recollection of how we.
Yeah, it's not so much that it would have to be a PUD, but the conversation itself about. I mean, we know the conversation is.
So, so Monica, what I, where I see this is, see the first one that's in the red? Like the green are the three we did and the incentivized development, redevelopment and built areas. Like this is where we're working and like, I think what Michael was just saying, like the info, like we still have to get through this whole item. You know, we're going to be talking about the TDR program here in a few minutes. And then there's also like the zoning changes. I think part of what you're talking about is like still here. Like, you know, whether we call it infill or call it.
Nine people and nobody.
Zoning changes in the general PUD. Yeah.
As long as it's, it's on the table, I mean, there's the one example, like you, when, when we made the, just to go back to the, I keep bringing this up, but the 1.8 change. And you said, Jessica, you thought that the infill would address that, because we changed an R4 to a 1.8, which is a down zoning. And then you said, well, yeah, but the infill will work to correct that, but we haven't done that yet. So that's.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're not missing.
Right, so that's, yeah. And it's, it's a big, I know it's a big conversation, it will be very, you know, it'll be a hot, a hot one in the community, because it's, yeah, but I feel like we need to have it. So.
Okay, any, any other questions on this? Let's see, we can move on to the initial policy discussion on the TDR updates. Which is part of that work plan item we were just talking about. And we have a packet, page 36 of our packet. That's where the memo is. And I really liked how staff had kind of summarized the timeline of where we got to. We've kind of been on semi-pause with the TDR work since IZ committee finished. But it was nice to kind of. Um, but it was nice to kind of see a few of the recommendations have been kind of rolled into our work that we've done. Um, but quite a bit left, so.
Yeah, yeah, we finished a, a report, but we didn't take it any further.
Yes, well, I guess I just, I guess what I meant was, um, there were a few things we did, like, um, about how the T D Rs related to the natural resources, and there were a few things that kind of slipped in along the way. But you're right, Michael, so we're restarting.
So, yeah, and just as part of the background, there was something that, this was so long ago, you know? Way longer, so the report came out that the, the I Z T D R committee did was written in July of nineteen. And then the second bullet that, um, Kelsey put in a part of, as part of the history, is when the planning commission basically accepted the report. And then the, the information that is in this packet, which is our agenda from February of twenty twenty that takes the T D R recommendations, it left one of them out. And I don't remember if we talked about this or what, but it actually, in my mind, is coming back to something that we should start thinking about again. And it's a complicated one, but the February third left out this, and what am I looking at, the agenda or? I think I'm looking at the, the agenda, which is the recommendation, so this wasn't our meeting minutes. But it left out the part of the recommendation from the T D R committee to create new definitions for what a dwelling unit is. And go look at um, square footage per dwelling unit. So for somehow, I don't remember if we just decided not to include that, or but the, but the recommendation from the T D R committee is create new definitions of a dwelling unit. And then when we got to considering it with the planning commission, which the planning commission accepted, it doesn't talk about that. So if it's not appropriate to bring it back up now, I don't, but in my mind, um, it is a good thing to talk about relating to T D Rs. And I can go on about that. I just was confused by these two pieces of history, cause I can't recall why the recommendation would have included it, but this doesn't. And Michael, I don't know if you have any recollection of that. Perhaps it was just too complicated a, a topic for the time.
I think we were trying, grappling with defining it by size. Not, you know, by s- square footage.
It just, it's not even mentioned though, here, so.
And we might have abandoned that idea as, as a, as less important than the other factors that we'd.
So I don't know, and, and so if there's, I guess what I'm asking is, at the right time in the T D R conversation? And if you want me to take two minutes to explain why I think it's important, I can do that now.
I'm uh, conflicted to put, to put it best. You know, the, the report was done as Monica's completed in two thousand and nineteen. I don't know about the rest of you, but I've learned a hell of a lot more about what we do since then. And uh, and the world has changed somewhat, and I'm, I'm not, it should guide us. But I don't think, uh, we should be, be too um, attached to the detail of that report. Because we have to fit it into what we've done since.
So maybe just let me explain what I will be looking for myself, and I may be the only one here, and I may not be the majority, okay? But what I'm gonna be looking for in the T D R conversation is how the fact that when the T D Rs were created, they were created in the S E Q, we all are aware that we want to expand them out of the S E Q. The area within the S E Q where the T D Rs were talking about basically taking one house that was gonna be over here and moving it to this other parcel were ninety-nine percent going to be homeownership, and they were probably gonna be expensive homes. We have no mechanism to say what a T D R unit is. And if it's in the S E Q, it can represent one five-bedroom house. But that same T D R moved to Shelburne Road can equate to a studio, and in regard.
Sorry.
I know that, I know that, but I have issues with us not discussing that, because I feel like there's an opportunity to um, to use the T D R marketplace to help the missing middle. And I don't know what the answer is, and this is coming from just me, not another committee. But I, that's why, when I looked back and I found, oh, actually, we did try to talk about that in the committee, it's not here. I, it's gonna be very mindful for me, and I would hope that we can find some productive ways to include that as we're thinking about T D Rs, that's why I brought this up.
So.
Quick question, Monica, uh, Spear Meadows, they've used quite a few T D Rs. Um, is there any, anything in them, in the missing metal, missing middle in Spear Meadows and in, in the nature of those homes?
There are some triplexes in Spear Meadows, an earlier version um, that had more total density had more variety, to be frank, but there are uh, triplexes in row homes as, as a portion of it. And so that's probably as close to the missing middle, the rest are duplexes and single families. Though the duplexes are a slightly different arrangement than anything else that exists in South Burlington. So I wouldn't necessarily say that's a totally different, but it is a, at least a different style than exists elsewhere.
But in, in, in answer to Monica's question, then maybe we should look at, just to see how a T D R was used to build homes that fit the missing middle. There's no, there's no restriction on what you may use a T D R for, use it for a dwelling. Doesn't say, we, I don't think we've defined what kind of dwelling.
This is my question, though, I feel like there's an opportunity to look at the needs of the city. And as we're expanding where T D Rs can go, why not expand how we're looking at how they're used? And if they can, if they can help, uh, whether it's in ownership versus rental, whether it's in studio versus, you know, getting some three-bedroom apartments for family size, whatever it is, I don't know what the answer is, I'm just asking, and I will be mindful in everything I look at that it's working to do that, and I don't have the answers, so there's nothing I can specifically recommend.
But I would note that that's the third bullet under A, is exactly that type of question for commissioners to say, what are the policies that you might want to achieve?
Yeah, thank you.
You know, it seems like a lot of this discussion is really part of this too. Like, if we're gonna expand the T D R marketplace, like, how are they applied? Like, right now, it's, it's, you know, they're applied in kind of one general area with just residential uses. But, you know, we've talked before about, um, or we, we actually have that one way where they could use it for lot coverage already. So if we're gonna be considering other ways T D Rs are used, I think you're right, Monica, we wanna make sure that makes sense. Like, you know, if right now they're only used for residential uses, like.
Except, except in the urban overlay district, the urban design overlay district, where we've done a trial run with lot coverage, but yes, lot coverage, building bulk. And uh, there's a third category, but yeah, um, my, my um, intent was that it should be very, very flexible, T D Rs should be usable for, or kinds of purposes, not just residential. But commercial, industrial. We, I don't see any reason why we should limit the use of T D Rs. And other, other cities uh, don't do that, T, a T D R is worth X. And it can be a residential unit, can be a certain number of square feet of additional lot coverage, can be a, a certain uh, addition to building bulk than, than what is in the uh, in the regulations. Like, instead of, if, if there, if the maximum is four stories, then you could buy T D Rs to get a fifth story. Or, you know, should be easy to use and easy to sell.
Yeah.
I guess a, a quick question to what Monica was asking for, and I'm not sure if this is what you're asking for, Monica, but are you looking to? And, and we, I know we talked about this a little bit before, about weighting T D Rs, giving them a greater value if they're used in a certain instance or a certain location, and we have talked about that.
It's, yes, I mean, and I don't know, weighting it for what, you know, we, if we have a discussion about, you know, what would really, what is the city needing? If we're, you know, what is the need? And then, yes, maybe how can we weight the T D R to get it? And to not make it a greater hurdle for the developer, but to say, look, this is what we want and, and need in the community. Yeah, and kind of met, find, look at it in a new way to match, match up the city's goal, the city's desire. Which I know we don't have things in the comp plan for that, so we're kind of having to understand some of it will come. But if there is an opportunity, then yes, I mean, I know one of the questions is, do we allow certain, you know, areas to get two or three dwelling units? There, I mean, yes, so.
Yeah.
I guess, yes, a weighting mechanism in terms of size, quantity, and, and questions like rent versus ownership if we have the right to do that.
I guess, Michael, in your T D R research, did you come across any instances of that, where other cities or anybody did anything like that?
Yes, uh, uh, other cities and other um, officials that I've spoken to in other cities say, have said, yeah. Don't, don't stick to simple arithmetic, if you want to, if you want a direct development into area X, give them three dwelling units per T D R, whereas the areas you, you don't want to develop, you only give them one. So that's a, a simple example, or, or, or doing the same thing with lot coverage and building bulk, where you want to incentivize a more efficient use of land and higher density.
Does that committee maybe need to be resurrected? To sort of put a lot of this together, I mean, there's so many ways that we can go here, and I feel like we're.
Ted, that's us now.
We are the committee.
No, it's a good question.
Well, no, there, there was a T D R committee.
Yeah.
I guess my, my suggestion would be, we, we tried to pose some questions that might frame this for you and help answer the question of are you at a place where, at the end of this discussion, you'd be ready for staff to give you a recommendation? Or do you feel like you've now given the framework for another group to look at it more closely? I think if you hand it to a group now, it'll be very difficult for them to get further forward than where they are now. Because the, the questions now become really planning commission questions. Do you want to allow more housing units along Shelburne Road? If so, do you wanna use T D Rs as a tool to do it? You could also just say, we're just allowing it. I think that's gonna be hard for a committee that isn't you to answer those questions, because they're really about overall city policy.
And develop rather, I'd rather have the density increase as opposed to having to buy T D Rs, so.
Yeah, we, we. I mean, i- if you, if, if you were to say, what's the simplest way to allow more housing? I would say just by allowing more housing, but there are multiple city goals that you're always trying to balance. And so allowing more housing via T D Rs might be a way that you achieve two goals. And to Michael's point, maybe the way that you would really incentivize it, and one of the notes in here is maybe in the southeast quadrant, a T D R is worth one dwelling unit, but on Shelburne Road, it's worth three. And so somebody might say, oh, I'd sure be willing to buy a T D R if I can get three homes out of it. Or four, or whatever, or an extra story, you can incentivize it in certain areas to, to really.
We, we have a real, a real life example of this, because I, at the request of the commission, I talked to several developers, and Joe Larkin, I asked him outright, if you were able to build an extra floor on your building at the corner of Shelburne Road and um, Fayette, would you, would you buy T D Rs for that? He says, absolutely, if I could comply with all the other city regulations, absolutely, yes, I would have done, I would do it. So it gave me some uh, some confidence that we were on the right track.
Um, well, so, I mean, I think at this point, you know, we have this staff memo, which has kind of set us up with some questions. And I think we're actually already talking about A. The, so we wanna really like, actually give some answers on, on A. Does the commission wish to use T D Rs as a tool to allow additional residential density in mixed-use areas? Specifically Shelburne Road, Williston Road and parts of Kennedy Drive.
My, I have to continue to raise the rent versus ownership question and how what would that ultimately look like, and what does the city think about that? Because, you know, it's um, if we don't tie that in, because also that T D R that was gonna be one in the S E Q was very likely much higher percent to be ownership. And is this now the time that we can incentivize, it's two to three if they're ownership, or three if it's ownership, and two if it's rental? Does anyone else care about that? Is that a goal of the city? I mean, it's, we know it's, that, that um.
Well, I guess the way that we tried to frame the questions and, you know, accept it, don't accept it, is if the answer to the first question is, you don't wanna use T D Rs to allow additional density, then the rest of them aren't really relevant questions. To Michael's point, you don't have to use T D Rs to get additional density, you could just do more density. I guess the first question is, is T D Rs a tool you want to use? Period. How you use it is the next question, but if the, if the answer is no, we'd prefer to just allow it without this other goal of, of conservation, then, you know, then you've answered a big question, we don't have to have another conversation about T D Rs.
Um, Paul, angles?
Um, Monica actually had her end up first.
Oh, well, that, well, my quick answer is, you gotta keep it tied to uh, T D Rs. We can't just give away density until all of our land is protected, cause that N R P is not protected until these T D Rs are sold. So I'm all for everything, any density increase needs to be connected to either I Z or T D R until every N R P acre is permanently conserved.
Paul, I wondered if you could give us uh, an update on the status of T D Rs.
Uh, I don't have a ton, ton of an update from the report that was, that was done. There hasn't been a lot of additional development that has used it, I would say less than ten dwelling units, maybe. Tate, T D Rs have been used since the report. It's been very light, if any, activity in the southeast quadrant in the last two years of things that weren't previously approved.
So that continues the trend that's been going on for over the last ten or twelve years, then, right?
We were also interim zoning, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's hard to say the whys of that. I would say that maybe the biggest update that I can give of the last couple of years is that through the zoning changes that you made and that the council adopted last month, you added a little bit of land to the N R P. Um, and then also said that T D Rs can't come from hazards. So you, you adjusted the sending a little bit, grew it in one hand, shrunk it a little bit in the other, other hand. And then, of course, the receiving areas shrunk a little bit because you added some areas to the N R P. So it's probably on balance, you've got a greater supply compared with potential demand than you used to have. But in terms of actual action and activity, there's been very little in the last couple of years.
Kelsey, did you wanna add to that?
Yeah, all I wanted to say in addition is that, um, I think it's, it's, I'm very new to this, to this whole situation, you know? Only being here for four or five months at this point, the, yeah, been probably, um. My gut under, my understanding is that some of the bottleneck in the, in the use of the T D R program is not necessarily the sending areas, but it's the receiving areas, that developers are wanting to develop in some of these areas that are, are more primed for more dense development, like Shelburne Road, Williston Road, Kennedy Drive. Um, and if the T D R program was expanded, if the receiving areas were expanded, the use of the program would also expand.
And I think that that is a difference from to, to Michael's point of, of, you know, speaking with some of the developers. I would say fifteen years ago, or thirteen years ago, when I started here, there wasn't that demand on Shelburne Road, um, really. And I think we've started to see more interest than used to exist, um, for a variety of reasons.
We may have created some interest and demand with this general P U D. But one other thing that Monica touched on is I think that we have an obligation. to, not to make it difficult for those who had TDRs before to sell them. We should make it easier. And that means expanding receiving areas and, and receiving, and then, and the nature of what a TDR can be used for.
How do you determine whether it's two or three or four, the ratio, you know, does?
Well, that's.
You mean, how, how, how should you evaluate what to do with it?
Right, exactly. Do I pull a, a two and say, sure, two, I mean, or should I say three?
I'm going to give a simple answer and a more complicated answer. The simple answer is the larger the number, the more it's going to get used.
Right.
The more complex answer is you, um, one of the guiding principles that you adopted in February of 2020 was to try to establish a balance of capacity of TDR usage. And so I think if you were to go down this path, we would at least do a simple analysis of if you made it 10 to one, how much would that actually result in? And how much, how much balance is it? You know, the more that you make it, uh, easy for a developer to want to buy it, the more that are going to get purchased. That's good. On the other hand, there's a total, you know, if you said it was 100 units for every TDR, you'd probably get four TDRs purchased, and that's probably the end of it for South Burlington because not many properties can take 100 units. So we would try to do a, at least a, a, a brief analysis of what's it going to do to the balance and how much would the market actually absorb?
Well, I mean, if we're looking for opinion, I would definitely say two or three in order to incentivize, for sure. And the second question is about the lot coverage, and that's an issue because we're concerned about dog parks and, you know, quality life and so on. So I do have a concern with regard to the second bullet point.
So, so, well, was it, one of you had your hand up for?
I did, but.
Okay, go ahead. So mathematically speaking, two to three on Shelburne Road is probably the equal to one in SEQ because those are big, bigger buildings, bigger houses. Can we not go back to looking at a very simple, you know, one TDR is X number of feet? And equate it because shouldn't somebody who wants to build a bigger house just have to buy more TDRs than someone who's building one smaller apartment, right? So we're saying, okay, well, rather than saying, well, you can have two to three in this area and one there, why not just say a TDR is this many square feet? And if you want to build a bigger house, you need, that's, that's more, that you don't want, you want to build one more, then you need to buy five TDRs to do that. If you want to.
And what is your square footage?
Well, that I don't know. I mean, but what's the magic number? What is the size of a, what's a one bedroom? You know, I don't know, but is there, is there a number that, that can work and just keep it, keep it to that?
Yeah, but that, that, that doesn't offer an incentive though, does it? If it's just a standard unit, there's no incentive, you're just buying, instead of one, you're buying six.
Um.
You're not incentivizing anybody there.
Or maybe you're incentivizing tiny units, which, well.
I mean, if, if it's only, if, if, if a, if a TDR is worth, you know, 2,000 square feet, then all you, you know, you're buying, somebody's doing 6,000 feet is by six, and if they're doing a single apartment, they only buy one. But does that incentivize them? I don't know.
Well, going back to, you know, speaking with the developers, they, it's units, 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 density, density, density. So if they can, does it change the, the, then this becomes an issue for the people that have the TDRs. But if it changes the, uh, the value of a TDR, maybe some, I don't know, I don't, there's big questions about how to do all that. I just wouldn't, I wouldn't take it off the table. I wonder if there isn't a simple solution in that. Because yes, does it, does it incentivize smaller buildings everywhere? And is that a bad thing? Maybe something to consider.
We can certainly take a look at it. I, I would want to also have a chat with our legal counsel because state law has a pretty clear definition of what is allowed to be transferred. Percentage increase in lot size or increase in building bulk, load coverage, or ratio of floor area to lot size. And as a result of the Spear Meadow Supreme Court case that challenged this provision, dwelling, um, density as calculated by dwelling units per acre is also acceptable.
Did you say that again?
Density, the way we talk about a dwelling units per acre, the Supreme Court ruled that that was consistent with this standard. So we can add that. Other ones like square footage, I think it, it's an interesting idea. But I, I want to talk with our legal counsel about that as a tool, given the state statutes.
Is, so just kind of back to the bigger picture. Is there kind of a general feel that we're in support of using TDRs in these areas? Like the Shelburne Road, Williston Road, Kennedy Drive area in order to increase residential density? So that's kind of the big picture. Is there general support for that concept? I think we've kind of gotten into the weeds. The sooner we can sell off these TDRs, the better, so, yes. So I'm seeing quite a bit of head nodding on the general concept.
Now, does it also include the mall, by the way, just as an aside?
The mall's in the Form Based Code District, um, which doesn't have a density cap today. So if we talk about sort of maximum incentives, the Form Based Code area creates the highest incentive, which is no, no TDRs required to be purchased. And I think you're starting to see some developers tip, dip their toes into what might that look like.
I didn't mean to veer, but I just.
Yeah, no, that's good. Paul?
That's the position I always find myself in in any of these discussions, is that there is no PUD or TDR in Form Based Code, so.
And Duncan?
I, I had a question kind of on the other end. Is there, are there any instances, I mean, there are certain areas or lands that we would like to see conserve maybe more than others, higher priority? Is there any weight given to a TDR at that end? That was if it's from an incredibly desirable area to be conserved. Would it be worth more than just a TDR from maybe something that's not as desirable to be? Again, I don't know if that's.
So, yeah, so something that does, um, that you've already done, that incorporates some of that is the hazard calculations. So a lot of times, not, not exclusively, but the calculations of hazards, level one resources, other things do take into account, they sort of map on equivalency of conservation value in certain, certain instances. So there's a little bit that's already been done on that side. There's a little bit of a difficulty in determining what that is, what, apart from the, so there's the, the interim zoning, highest priority conserv, conservation parcels and the report of those top 25 parcels. There's a, a bit of a legal question and a planning question about prioritizing those parcels and becoming a, a spot zoning issue, calling out just because of the way the parcel lines fall, it happens to have 10% wetlands or the way the stream flows. One parcel that's immediately next to another parcel could be, end up being treated completely differently. In the same way that, you know, parcels number 22, 23, 24, 25 would be treated differently than 26 and 27, when maybe the different, the functional differences ecologically or environmentally between the two are so negligible as to not justify being able to treat them differently. So it's just a little more, it's a bit more difficult on the other end of, of calling out a list of high priority parcels and assigning more value to them. It's not necessarily that something along those lines couldn't be done, but I think it would be very difficult to tie it to, you know, a list of 25 parcels or a spec, you know, a specific list like that, which I think is what you're referring to with the, with the priority for conservation. You could, there, and this is just me sort of going, you know, shooting from the hip at this, at this point, but there would be an opportunity possibly to give more value to lands that have more level one resources or level two resources, or, you know, some of those measurable metrics, um, instead of a list of 25.
This is a little bit of an aside, but there, there is a little bit of an incentive, not through our rules, but at a statewide level for applicants to identify high value agricultural soils to be their TDRs. Because under Act 250, there's an agricultural mitigation required. And if they can identify areas where they would do agricultural mitigation, they're also allowed to use TDRs from that same area. And so we've seen a couple of developers who've identified that if they can match up those areas, they make the commitment to us through our level of, um, uh, permanence and Act 250, which is a little less permanent, but is still a requirement. And so it, we've seen a couple of instances where there's an advantage to the developer to think about it that way.
So do you mean that they would assign a TDR to cover the mitigation?
They would, yes, they, they would select, everything else being equal, if they could choose this piece of land from their sending area of this piece, and this piece could potentially qualify as ag soils. There's been a couple that have, um, taken advantage of choosing this ag soil one also because that allows them to meet state and local permitting requirements.
That's great. That hadn't come up with our discussions of the egg soils, we, you know.
Yeah, it's.
Just generally the.
I didn't want to state it as a, because it's not a requirement, but it, there's, there's a little bit of a, uh, an incentive to somebody who has that opportunity.
Okay, so if we continue to kind of move down our list, um, we talked about this a little bit. We could, and how do people feel about incentivizing the use of TDRs by allowing them to count for more, whatever more is in, um, you know, some of these mixed use areas? So I know, we don't know the number yet, and we don't know if maybe it could be tied to size or like. Right, well, and rent versus ownership if that is allowed. So, or maybe other things, but yes, I don't think it needs to be tied, my opinion, not, not a one to one ratio, house to house or residential unit to unit. But it's, yeah, by all means, let's incentivize what the city wants. So yes, incentivize just in general. As long as that also works out financially for the seller. I don't know how that doesn't harm the seller, you know, and it still has to be, it can't, this. The, but, yeah, right?
Monica, I suspect that a seller who knows that the buyer is, is in an area where he can build three units per TDR, is going to ask more for that TDR than, than one he sells to a person who can only build one. And th- this is a negotiation between, we have nothing to do with it, between the owner of the TDR, of the transferable development right, and the prospective buyer of that right.
As long as we're not doing anything that would.
Broadly speaking, incentivize it by allowing it to count as more units would be good for the selling TDR folks, unless we go so far as to flood the market to say that one is worth 100.
Who I was gonna buy five, but now I'll, I need to buy two. Then that, that might not hurt the one seller, but it's going to hurt the market.
And this is something that will probably need to be evaluated every few years as to, to what extent is the market being balanced? Because it's, it's the market that's going to determine the value of it. And if you determine, you know, after a five year review, that as we've seen so far, there's not been a lot of demand for it. Maybe there'll be so much demand for it that the value becomes, drops through the floor.
Just for clarification, a, um, a person who buys the TDRs doesn't have to tell someone where they're going to build. I can be Mr. Developer, and I can go to Michael, who has four acres, and I know, and say, I'll buy eight of your TDRs. And I can bank them.
Yes.
And I can buy some more, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I think in this case, that the, both the seller and the buyer have to submit their plan to the DRB. The details.
Um, when it's being used, yes, but somebody could purchase the right of TDRs just as I would like to go and, I'd like to corner the market on all TDRs in the future. The risk that they're taking is that the city's regulations could change. We could say the TDRs are worth more, worth less, that's your speculative choice if you choose to buy them. But there are some folks, for example, um, when the, uh, I'm trying to think of the name, um, when the Vermont Land Trust purchased, no, because they didn't sell it to somebody else. There have been examples of where somebody have bought some TDRs and they may use to use them somewhere else.
Yeah, because, sorry, no, I mean, I may have misunderstood, but I was talking with the developer. He had said he had collected a certain amount of TDRs. And he has several parcels in, you know, in and around. I'm sorry?
JJ.
That's all I was going to clarify is that you could hypothetically have, have, you know, you own a piece of property, you're not developing it tomorrow, but you know you're going to be developing it in the next 10 years, but you want to make sure you have enough TDRs. You could buy what you think you need or part of what you think you need and hold it. It's not a direct, some, and then, and the same with the selling. You could, you can sell it and just sever it from your property without any, any knowledge or any promise from anybody that it will ever be attached to anything. There's still, there's value to a seller to sell, no matter what someone else is doing with it on the other end.
The, the, sorry, go ahead, Paul.
The seller doesn't get paid at the moment that the TDR is purchased. They get paid when the TDR is used, so the, the risk is for the seller and not for the developer.
That's the negotiation between the buyer and the seller. You're right, most of the time, that's how that would work, but you could sell to Duncan tomorrow, and if Duncan wanted to buy it from you, he, he could, um, and pay you today.
But nobody does that because the TDR should not use very much.
The, the place where the permanence comes in is when it's in front of, in front of the DRB. So when they are officially used on Shelburne Road or in somewhere in the southeast quadrant today, that's when legally the development rights are severed from the property. Uh, as a physical thing, they could be owned by somebody else, but not yet have a landing place until the, until it comes.
There's another wrinkle in this, Paul, uh, the Vermont Land Trust sold option, an option to a developer for, I don't know, 30 or 50 TDRs. And the developer paid a certain amount of money every year to keep that option in force. If the developer subsequently says, ah, well, I don't need them anymore, then he says, I'm not, I'm, um, my obligation to pay for that option is, 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 um, complete, so I'm not going to do it anymore. And then those TDRs go on the market again.
Yeah, and that's tough for people who are the sellers because that's their family fortune, basically. I mean, their money, their retirement, everything, their inheritance is in their land, you know?
So we're going to try to make sure that we're supporting the system here. Yes. So I guess moving on to the next bullet point. TDRs can be used today to achieve additional lot coverage, not building coverage, within the urban overlay district. Are commissioners comfortable with these tools being able to be paired? Or should it be one or the other at a given site? So, so are we comfortable with both additional lot coverage and additional building coverage? By.
Uh, dwelling units.
Oh, both bit lot coverage and dwelling units, okay. I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Duncan?
Oh, I was just, I, I'm going to ask a really simple question. Lot coverage, building coverage, what's the difference?
Lot coverage is the total portion of your property that water cannot seep through essentially. It's walkways, it's buildings, it's parking lots, it's drive aisles.
So impervious.
Buildings is just buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, basically impervious surfaces versus everything.
And my question is, in using a TDR to increase your lot coverage, it doesn't get you out of any of the required site amenities, nothing like that? So that's all still protected, they're not buying out of that?
Based on what you pass to council tonight, you now know that all site plans going forward will need to accommodate a site amenity on site. And the lot coverage can go up 10% maximum. So from 70% on Shelburne Road to 80%, that's the max, max that you've allowed under the prior amendments that you did. So it doesn't go to 100.
If we were in these areas looking for more height, I would think, in other words. Height, I would think, in other words, four or five stories. I would think we'd want to take out the lot coverage part and incentivize someone to go up as opposed to out.
Makes sense.
Yeah, cuz I'm concerned about just, yeah, everything being impervious.
Are we still, um, do we continue to be okay with the current provision of the extra ten percent lot coverage? You know, cuz that's in our LDRs now. I don't. Well, ten, nobody is saying that we should do something different than what's in. Is anyone?
No, but are we saying that we, instead of lot coverage, you could do ten percent building coverage? Is that what you're asking?
I think the, the, the question that we were asking is you today allow somebody to have a little bit more lot coverage, so that means. Larger parking area, for instance. The, what you're considering is dwelling in, more dwelling units per acre, not necessarily more building bulk, but more dwelling units that can be existing. Um, would you be okay with us drafting up something that allowed somebody to theoretically do both? Dwelling units and take advantage of what you passed two years ago, or is it one or the other? I, I think from our perspective, they can go. Hand in hand, but we wanted to be transparent and pose to you. The, the question.
Same type of building, they could just put more dwelling units in that building.
Right.
Not making a bigger building.
Not yet. That could be a discussion that you have later on about whether the building can get bigger. But right now, as we talked about a few months ago, and I know that we've done a lot of things since then. If you imagine somewhere like the south end of Shelburne Road. Today, if you built a commercial building, an office building. It could be X total size. It could be four stories in height. It could be. Uh forty percent building coverage, the setback has to be ten feet. Imagine a big office building that did that. We, if you chose to make that housing, you were limited to seven dwelling units per acre, period. You could change the density and say it's twenty dwelling units per acre. And it's the same size building as what you're allowing, because on the commercial side, there's no cap on the amount of. There's no density on the commercial side. It's just the total maximum bulk of the building. So you, you're essentially, if you use TDRs. In a place like that, you're incentivizing residential to exist because you're making it more competitive with commercial. You're saying. You know, if you, if that same four story building could have had. Forty dwelling units instead of our prior maximum of twenty, well, you know, somebody might say, oh, you know what? Instead of building a commercial building. Or building a one story auto, you know, um, auto dealership. All, I think it's worth it to me now. I couldn't, if I could only build fifteen homes on that property, it wasn't economically worth it, but now that I can do forty. Within the same building bulk as what I could have done commercially. Now we're talking about something that's, that, that they'd be willing to do. So that's what that could achieve.
You could, you can distinguish between residential and commercial. You know, you could say, uh, you can get an increase in residential density. Uh, and you, or you can get an increase in residential building bulk. Or you can get an increase in building bu- bug or lot coverage of commercial, industrial, uh institutional and. Areas, zones, so. That would basically, in simple terms, was what you just said, Paul.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm, what I'm saying, so, so it's a two part conversation for you, really. If you're talking about density only. Then what we could provide to you is something that allows for more homes, but not necessarily. Bigger buildings than what could be allowed today. You might also want to have a conversation of would a bigger building be acceptable? And I think in that case, I think we'd probably owe to you at least a, a little drawing of like what could exist as the maximum size of a building today. Additional stories might be okay, but you might say, whoa, wait a minute, you know, we've got views of Lake Champlain here. We don't want to go taller than. That, or you might say. It's presumption, it, it's, it's a presumption that we didn't want to just automatically assume.
Well, well, so I guess the first question was. Are people okay with more? More units and size, the same size building?
And I think you've already answered the question.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Then the second piece is about, are we okay with maybe getting some more information on bigger buildings? So that would be helpful to have staff help us look at possibly making things either taller or bigger.
Okay.
Or both.
Or both.
Do that, and you could choose to do both at the same time, or you could say, we're ready to. Adopt TDRs that allow more density. And we're gonna study bigger buildings. Over the next year. You could choose to do it all at once, or you could do it in steps. That's, that's up to you. If you wanted to say. We want to get TDRs going, the fastest thing you could do would be within the same building size. Then you're not, I mean, the community will have less interest frankly in. If you can just put more dwelling in it in the building versus the building being two more stories tall, that might have more.
But then what we're doing is we're incentivizing smaller units, you know?
Not necessarily.
Okay, why, how?
The south end of Shelburne Road right now allows seven dwellings per acre. That's a pretty low number on the residential side. Given that the buildings could be a really big building, if. Somebody couldn't really achieve. They couldn't maximize the size of the building with seven units in acre. You'd have five thousand square foot dwelling units, which just doesn't really make sense. So you could double that easily. And not actually, and have still reasonably sized apartments or condominiums. You're not, you wouldn't be down to micro units. If you took a place that was already. Thirty dwelling in its acre and then made it more than that, then maybe we, we'd be talking about it at seven or fifteen even. I don't think you're, I don't think you're there yet.
Um, Kelsey?
Yeah, and something that we don't necessarily need to talk about tonight, but that I would like to talk about at some point. Is the value of TDRs in. Commercial only built, commercial, industrial, et cetera, only buildings. Versus residential only buildings versus any kind of calculation that you may want to do in something like a Larkin Terrace where there's commercial. Or, or services or something on one floor and residential on another floor and. Could you be using TDRs for? Something to do with the commercial in a different way than something to do with the, the upper stories of residential and how all of that, it may be getting. I may be jumping totally into the weeds where it gets way, way, way too complicated too quickly. But it is something, especially in the areas we're talking about, Shelburne Road, Williston Road, Kennedy Drive, that I'm not sure. A, you don't want to. You may not want to have re- a bunch of residential TDRs, and this goes a little bit to Monica's point, a bunch of residential TDRs coming out of the SEQ. That are then used for commercial space. On the flip side. I'm just saying, this is a, these are questions.
We have a housing shortage.
Because you lose, you, you lose a housing unit or two housing or whatever, how number of housing units.
But you get jobs.
But you get, so it's a, it's a conversation that I'd, I'd like to continue having, and so for the, for the same reason. Do you provide more value if you're applying the TDR, TDR to a commercial space? That then has upper floors of residential. There are a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of ways to do this, but. Taking into account that a lot of well planned. Buildings and developments in the areas like we're looking at will have some kind of mix and how maybe to take that into account. Uh, and that's something clearly that we'll, we can, we can talk about later, just to put on your radar.
Can I respond to that? I think what would be helpful is to help to figure out what can we do immediately? And then what can we do? Next, and I think a next answering that would be. Um, for us to, and maybe it's part of the comp plan, but to really look at. What areas would we really like to incentivize to do X? And once we know that, figure out, well, what will it take? To make it happen? Like, what will it take to make? You know, and then, and then work with the TDRs in a way that we haven't been allowed to before, cuz they were all. You know, locked into the SEQ. But you know, it's like, cuz there may be some specific areas where we say, you know, gee. It would be really fantastic, like, I mean, I'm gonna throw this one out and get my, whatever, that there's. San Remo Drive, my god, some of these buildings, some of these businesses that have been there, I guess, for a very long time and have. Restoring broken, sharp fences and sticking out on sidewalks, like, is there not something we can do to incentivize? The people that, you know, I know that's probably part of farm based code, so that one doesn't count, but there are other areas of the city that have these situations where. You know, a little more incentive through a TDR could really help move something. So as a next step, I think it might be us looking at those areas specifically and say, oh, this area, what can we do? What's the vision to make it better? And how can we then? Work the TDRs to, to provide that, to move towards that. But more immediate, that doesn't sound like something we can take on. Immediately.
Well, you can, I guess. My view, and I'm, I, I don't get a vote, but my view is there are some relatively. Short term activities that you could get to create a pretty strong market for TDRs. Some of these more nuanced conversations could take a three month project to make it a twelve month project. So the question for you is, do you want to? Do twelve months to fully review? Or do you want to sort of see seventy percent success in three months? And then decide to look in the more um nuanced areas as a separate project? That's really for you guys to, to discuss. And decide, you know, how do you want to fit into your, your overall work plan?
I, I, I think we have it as one of our goals to create a more robust market for TDR, so I think we need to keep that in mind in this conversation. And the other thing, this kind of goes back to what you were talking about, simplify. But let's not. Let's not create a whole arcane process for someone with TDR. Let's stimulate the market, but try to keep it simple.
I was about to say.
Not too complicated.
Yielded the floor to Duncan, that we, we should do a, a, a full but basic TDR. Uh ordinance or whatever you want to call it now, and these. Refinements and nuances are quite complicated. I think Kelsey has already. Indicated that it's uh, it'll require a lot of work, and I think uh. We need, we need to get this TDR market. Up and running as quickly as we can, and so a, a, a basic TDR ordinance that covers the bases that we want. Uh, we should do first.
I have an idea. Can you, within the TDRs, give um, put it on? A developer or a landowner? So we come up with like, here's what you can do with a TDR. But if you have something really cool, pitch us, you know, and, and is there a way that we can? Invite that kind of creativity? Because simplify, get it out there, yes, but what if somebody actually does have? A, a unique idea that if we did it, it would be spot zoning, but if they came to us and said, you know. If you have an idea that meets these five criteria. Maybe there can be more flexibility. And put it on them, and then who does that go to? Does it go to the DRB? Does it go to us? But, but it's just something to think about, cuz I agree, we need to keep it. Simple, we need to sell TDR, get, you know, get, help the people sell their TDRs. But there are places, I, okay, I'm thinking around, you know, Kennedy Drive and Williston Road. And I'm looking at driving out towards Williston right there, and I don't know what's planned for there, but I drive past there all the time and I'm. Just seeing. To me seems like very underutilized.
It's a really neat idea, Monica. I think that the state law is gonna constrain us on that. Because it does say, define the amount of density increase allowable and the quantity of development rights necessary to obtain those increases. Define density increase as to what you mean by it. It's a pretty tight box.
But what I, what I will say, Monica, I think what you passed. To go to city council tonight with the general PUD does accomplish some of what you're saying. What Paul's saying is that you have to set basically the, what you get for what TDRs, you know, what density you give up, what density you get, that sort of thing has to be all aligned. You know, that can't be that, it can't be that flexible and can't be that creative, but. Having flexibility and other aspects of site design through the general PUD could. End up getting some of that creativity going where someone will then end up being able to use. Five TDRs where under a, you know, the classic, the, the rest of the land use. The less, rest of the LDRs would constrain it to only being able to use three or, or something like that. I think that's part of what the general PD has happened.
So, so it sounds like we definitely want to move forward with something. These zones make sense. Um, maybe some commercial use, like if you have some ideas to bring back. And um, and then I guess the next question here under our first section is. How do people feel about other geographic areas of the city? Or should we at this point kind of focus on that area we identified in December, the Shelburne Road, Williston Road, Kennedy Drive? Because that's kind of a. You know, and then later work to maybe expand to other areas. Like, how do people feel about the, the footprint?
Citywide, except for base code. Get ready, you know, and I also, on the other side.
Well, I guess when you say citywide, I guess we'd want a little more definition. So if somebody were to be in the middle of the orchards. Would you want them to get a density increase via TDRs right now before you've had the neighborhood discussion?
That's why I wasn't sure about the infill, and if you're saying we're not having an infill PUD and it's, you know, so.
Right, but if you said to us right now, TDRs could double the density in all districts, that's not necessarily a PUD discussion. That's just a doubling of density. So that's why, you know, we want to be careful about what you mean by expand citywide.
Yeah, but you, you, in what we call in, in, as a, appendix C, we'll have to define what you get. How much, how much density you could put in this uh, with TDRs.
Right.
Thank you, Paul. Could be expressed as a percentage uh, or as an absolute number.
I, I think it goes back to what Monica was talking about earlier, you know, the conversation around residential neighborhoods is something that we, we obviously really need to have. Um, but I think that throwing TDRs in there right now is, would be. That could be, that's the potential for negative consequences.
So maybe we could try something like we did with inclusionary zoning where we. Kind of adopted it in an area we felt comfortable with, got it on the books and then did some more looking. At how it would apply to the rest of the city, maybe as a second step. So. Um, Monica?
We, the TDR committee did recommend, and so when I'm thinking citywide, the TDR recommended and created a map. Of other places, and some of those are not on, not in the urban overlay district. Now, they're not areas that everyone might agree with, for example, White Street. There's a patch along White Street, there's a patch along the top of Spear Street. So they're not areas that everybody here may agree on. We've never even as a, as a commission looked at the details of that map. But there is a map, and I think the idea was in the committee, the commission, the committee even said, created TDR overlay district. So it may be a TDR overlay district that applies. Here and on, I mean, these very specific places, but. So there, there is a map that exists in, in the TDR committee's report. That highlights very specific streets and goes as far as saying, hey, that's currently an R seven. Let's say you can go up to an R fourteen if they use TDRs. So. It might be a way of, of kind of achieving the citywide, but, but really just has this overlay in specific areas, so.
It's not gonna. It's not going to put to bed the, the problem of the neighborhood. Uh, objecting to the increased density. I mean, we're gonna have this clash between the need for. Higher density and more housing and who's there now? And I guess uh, we might have to get to the point where that gets confronted in public hearings. Ultimately.
But in the meantime, if we want to get this out, I think that we probably need to not. Put it.
In the meantime, I, I think we should, I don't know how to put, be less sensitive to that issue. And get a, a basic TDR plan out.
Yeah, I think we should have a more conservative plan going out that's very easy, and I mean, of one of the other biggest problems is that people that want to buy TDRs. Don't even know who to talk to. There's a, there's a broken marketplace that way, and there's a whole part of the report that tells. That suggests what to do, um, and that's not really something we can do. I mean, I think it's more of a, what the city council has to. Require, it's not a planning, it's like not an LDR to create a better TDR registry.
We could build it into an, into a TDR ordinance.
But there's maybe, yeah, but, but there's, we, there was definitely, it was. The fact is, it's very difficult in general for anyone to even know who owns a TDR and who, you know. So there's some very simple things that the city can do. The question is, who is that and under what mechanism? So there's some very simple things that the city can do. The question is, who is that and under what mechanism is it done?
So let's stay focused on our outline.
So the, the other possibility, um, in here, we, we gave the example of industrial areas. I think our recommendation is there may at some point be a demand for TDRs in industrial areas. But right now, I don't think we've identified either A, what the development community is looking for that they don't have. Or B, what you are specifically looking to incentivize. I think from the staff perspective, we have a much clearer sense on a place like Shelburne Road, Kennedy Drive, Williston Road. That you want additional debt residential density and that the development community is interested in it also. That's why I think from our perspective, that might be a step two or three, because we haven't identified what that market is. What are you trying to incentivize there yet? Um, and I think it's a great project, but I don't know what it is that they'd be willing to pay for nor what you want to incentivize yet.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's a next. I'm, I'm kind of looking at things as immediate versus next and next seems good.
Are people comfortable with moving on to number three? Which is, um, about additional, uh. Do you have some public comments, Sarah? Do you want to chime in before we move on?
Yes, just very quickly. I put something in the chat just now, but I wasn't sure anybody was monitoring it. It's probably an overly simplistic question, but maybe not. Uh, you can either read it or I'll articulate it. Uh, it was basically just, do, do we have an idea of how many unusable TDRs there are? Out there that we want to accommodate somewhere? It seems like that would be a planning tool. If there are, uh, a thousand slots found through some rezoning ideas. But you only have six hundred TDRs. Now, wouldn't that be important, you know?
It'd be like, you go here and there they are.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree, Sarah, um. So.
I don't think we can easily answer that right now, and that's part of that challenge, that there isn't an easily accessible. Way to do that, so very good point, Sarah.
We, we did have an idea back in two thousand and nineteen, but that has changed since then. Some may have been sold and we've got new ones, additional ones.
True enough, but i- is there any notion of order of magnitude? Even, even if not precise numbers.
Do you know the number?
It would be, it would be, um, an, an unscientific guess, so. I, I don't want to hesitate right now. I think I'd, we'd, we'd need to have Paul go back and look at the data that he had before.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, I guess, Sarah, I, I think this, that's actually a really good question and, um. Maybe would be really informative before moving further into the, the memo we have, which starts to talk about sending areas. Um, you know, to really get a better sense of that balance, so. Um, I guess, just for me, like, looking at the time and looking at where we're at, like, it feels like this might be a good. Or at least close to a good stopping point for tonight, so we can kind of get. Information back from staff on the first part we've already discussed and then have a, a discussion about the balance of the supply and the demand.
Is there a negative? I mean, you don't want to vote on number three, you're saying?
No.
Okay, okay.
I want to move on to minutes, I think, if that's, if that's okay.
All right, move to approve, uh, minutes of March eighth and February twenty-third.
Second.
Okay, any discussion about the minutes? We have some minute commenters.
I have to find it.
Yeah.
On the minutes of. Mark, sorry.
Are you looking for something to make a comment on, Michael?
Yeah, yeah, I just need to figure out which minutes they are. Uh, I guess it's March the eighth. Sorry, not March the eighth. February twenty-third. There's a comment. Uh, attributed to me. Um, that I'd asked about the, about a building maximum solar exposure. And I'd suggested that we use the word required instead of encourage. And I think Paul is quoted as saying he didn't see, he didn't see an issue with that, but I don't know what we did. Did we change the word? Required, to required. This is in the, in the general PUD, and it probably applied, would apply elsewhere as well.
I think we'd just say we were going to use the same language that's used in the form-based code language, part of the.
Is that a good reason to make two wrongs?
Well, we may have made two wrongs, but that is, that is what happened, though, what's recorded here that we. Paul showed us something and we said, okay.
Uh, my reading of this is, he said, okay, change it to required.
Wait, it doesn't say that in here. What are you thinking? It says regarding solar orientation, Mr. Connor showed the proposed language from the other Pewdies and said that they could be copied here. Members were okay with adding that language. I think that's what happened. Do you remember something different? Page four.
Oh, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure you're looking at the same section. Michael, are you? Is it the section that I've got up on the screen here?
Yep.
Oh, I might be looking at a different thing.
What page is that?
Uh, page two of the minutes and page forty-four of the packet. Kelsey, do you recall if there was a change made in the draft?
There was not, um, and I can read the section that was added to the Pewd draft if that would help. Because I did find the language.
Because we readdressed this issue on page four, when I was looking.
And what do we do in the front base code? We are more, that sounds familiar. I think that. You just said, Jessica, you said something about.
Yeah, so, so Michael, we didn't resolve it here at what we're looking at. If you like scroll over to page four halfway down. That's where we talked, that's where Paul actually showed us the language. Because remember, like, you brought it up here and then we got distracted and then, um. So regarding.
I did look through the draft. Which we've. Which we approved. But, um.
So did we do, Kelsey, did we do what's described here?
Yep.
Showed the proposed language from other Pewdies and copied it over to the general Pewd regarding solar. Okay.
That didn't change my question, though. Would apply everywhere. My comment about not using the word encourage because it will be ignored. And I'm, I, I come back to this because I'm now serving on another task force. Namely, climate action and makes a difference.
Do you know what, Michael? I think we actually even addressed that in the meeting in that we're expecting to have a lot of work to do. With the direction of that committee.
We.
So I think that I remember saying, yeah, we'll be getting more from you, and then at that time, we might be looking at all of this.
Okay.
Any other?
Did we have a second for approving?
We had two seconds and I don't know which one won. Ted won.
I approved, I mean, I made the motion.
Okay, wow. Okay, any changes? So we're going to call the vote here. Okay, on favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye? Minimum, it's great, okay.
Uh, just quickly, you've got two sets of amendments. You can choose on Thursday, the fourteenth, to go to Newski or Shelburne or both, if you can do it online. Um, Shelburne, as I mentioned earlier, is looking at some, uh, changes that would enable temporary structures, which is sort of interesting. Um, I have one other quick thing under other business, which is, uh, as you know, Bernie stepped down. Bernie was your vice chair. We have put out the ad for, um, a new person to fill the slot. It is likely. On April fourth, the council meeting that interviews will take place. They may not have that person immediately. Do you want to wait for that person to have joined you before you fill the vice chair slot?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question. Or do you want to, you know, if the council doesn't find somebody immediately, do you want to?
Okay, Ted said we differ.
We should, we should find somebody, we should find somebody quickly to avoid three, three ties.
Well, it does seem confusing to change. I mean, we're talking about one or two meetings or three meetings, so.
Okay, so we'll. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, yeah, we were going to do that. We were going to talk about Bernie's attributes.
Uh.
Because we thought that it wasn't going to happen until the regular.
Yeah.